Could all rise for the pledge. Mr. Cogbrooke, you leave some pledge, sir.
Pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces and for our first responders. Thank you.
And as everyone knows, with the new year comes the new budget season, which is why I'm here to talk to you tonight. I'm here to, once again, implore you all, as members of one of the most important boards in town, who has a say in our town's budget, including our education budget, to attend, actually physically attend, the Board of Education's deliberations. They begin next Tuesday, the 21st, at 7:00 PM, at Sarah Noble School. They run Tuesday, the 21st, and Wednesday, the 22nd, Tuesday, the 28th, and Wednesday, the 29th, all starting at 7:00 PM, all in Sarah Noble's library. On the first day, you will be able to hear the superintendent present what she is requesting for a budget, followed by the administrators at the pre-K through grade five schools in town. The second day should be, unless they've run out of time for the pre-K to five, which they'd continue then the next day, second day should be grade six to 12 schools. The administrators will go into depth of what their budget is and why they need it. The following week, on Tuesday, the 28th, it should include the district-wide departments. That includes the special ed department. That's a really heavy hitter on the budget and a huge amount of the budget. So, to look at the budget and just say, wow, that's a huge amount, and you have to slash it, which, no offense, is the appearance that is given by this council, is a wrong way to approach it. There's a reason that those budget numbers are so high, it's because the schools need that money. And the last day, Wednesday, is just any follow-up items. If you're unable to attend, they do obviously tape them and record them and show them. And there's also always a list of questions that are asked at every meeting, that get answered, and publicly put online on the Board of Education's website. You can go and ask any question you want. They'll include it on the list of questions, and they will get you the answer, and they will publicly post the answers as well. It saddens me to say that I saw Mayor Bass, I think, at one or two meetings, or part of the meetings last year. May have saw one or two other people, aside from David, who had to be there last year, given his position last year. And really, that's quite scary, when you think about it. This is two-thirds of our town's budget, and it needs to be respected. And to sit here in this room and listen to them present for 20 minutes, 45 minutes, an hour even, does not do it justice, especially when the only questions you're asking about are sports teams, and they're going to be having to do pay-to-play again. So I really urge you all to show up at the meetings, I'll be there, and I'd like to see some of your faces there this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the list, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, welcome. Thanks to the mayor's comments. So Happy New Year to everyone, and just to second Megan's comments, the BOE will be having their hearings, Mr. Lawson can attest to, Councilman Lawson, so if you can make those, please make every effort to do so. Also, you'll be able to pick up your book, if you do attend the meetings, which will have the BOE or the superintendent's recommendation. I'd like to thank our Department of Public Works, our Park and Rec, New Milford Police Department, New Milford Fire, and New Milford Ambulance, for all their efforts during our winter storm so far. As we all know, most of it wasn't snow, it was ice, which makes it way more difficult, and I commend our DPW team for making sure our roads were safe for our residents in a very quick time, especially that last surprise ice sleet storm that we had, so I'd like to thank them for that. I'd like to remind everybody, the Coffee with the Mayor is on the 25th this month, 9:30 AM to 11:00 AM. Like to see you there. Kind of some quick updates, the downtown sidewalks, you may have seen some of the cones that are out on the sidewalks, we're beginning our first year to repair some of those sidewalks that were cracked and damaged, that could present somewhat of a safety hazard for those in town. So I'd like to thank Jack Healy and our DPW team and our contractor for beginning that work, and this will be an ongoing work yearly, as we repair our sidewalks downtown. Also, our Sarah Noble roof is almost complete. I'd like to thank Garland, who's the GC on there, for all their efforts on the project. At our next meeting, I'll have the finalization for that, and it's a wonderful thing to have that project almost completed, where we have a safe and secure roof without any leaks for our teachers and residents and children that attend that school. I'd like to congratulate New Milford resident Michaela, they call her Mac Furlough, she was the Offensive Field Hockey Player of the Year for Arcadia Field Hockey College, so congratulations to Mac. I'd like to congratulate New Milford High School teacher Linda Servone for winning the Albania Cana, I'm probably going to mispronounce this, so I apologize, Canavallaccio Award, that's a statewide mathematics education award from the Associated Teachers of Mathematics, it's presented to the teacher who works as a mentor to both students and teachers, improves the mathematics community. So that's a great job, outstanding, thank you. Roads update, we're in our second year of our program, it's been completed. DPW and our Municipal Roads Committee are working on the third year of the program, and they will be presenting that at our next Town Council meeting. Couple other things concerning the Board of Education, we met with the superintendent, the new Board of Ed Chairman, and it was concerning a couple of things that we're continuing to work together closely. First is our healthcare costs, looking to do what we can do together to stabilize and maintain, we had a significant savings this past year, and are looking at at least mitigating ever-increasing healthcare costs, and I'll be bringing that more to the council. We're also going out for an RFP, because it's time now to see about our healthcare consultant, and so we'll be pushing that out and letting the council know more when that happens. We're also looking at joint purchasing, I can give you an example, so the playgrounds that the Town Council and the Board of Finance agreed that we could do, because we bid them all together, we were able to save an additional $8,331 by the ability of working together. So that's a wonderful endeavor. We're also looking at shared costs of anything from paper, copiers, asphalt for roads and parking lots, and I'll be bringing that again to the Town Council to show if we do do these, what significant savings there will be. Also, the Economic Development Corporation is having the Best of the Best Awards Dinner, that's on the 23rd of January, that's at 19 Main, and they're going to be honoring the following businesses. For Project of the Year, it's the New Milford Hospital, NuVance Health, the Employer of the Year is Kimberly Clark, and the Partner of the Year is Hal Fischel, who owns the Bleacher. If you'd like more information, or you'd like to attend the Best of the Best, you can call Karen Pollard, her number's 860-355-5001. On the 7th of January, we had a joint meeting of the Planning, Zoning, Economic Development Commission, Inland Wetlands, Zoning, Conservation, Historic Property and Sewer. All this was, in essence, so that they could meet, the boards and commissions could meet, and also we had Courtney Hendrickson from CIRC, as we were looking at more ways to create efficiencies in the application and implementation of our economic development and our application process. We wanted the public to know that New Milford is open for business, and that Karen will be presenting more on this at our next Town Council meeting. So I want to thank all those boards and commission members that could attend that meeting, and we had a great dialogue. Kind of updates for Park and Rec, the Park and Rec Maintainers are continuing their brush around the edges of the parks, and they also did some drainage swales at Lindemings Park. They have 48 children sign up for ice skating lessons, 38 children are participating in the Wild Hoops Basketball Program, 20 teams in the New Cornhole League, 19 in Ballet Princesses, 18 in Dog Obedience, and 14 in Irish Dancing. The maintainers have chipped 240 Christmas trees so far, and you have until February 1st to bring your trees up to Clatter Valley. They're also working on the new bathroom sinks to be installed at Lindemings. They've also assembled and installed six new garbage receptacles that are being replaced in the downtown. They also completed the garbage and litter cleanup downtown last Monday, they also did work Wednesday and Friday. For the Senior Center, assistance was provided to an additional 68 individuals with food insecurity, medical, financial, and shore services, and they had health and safety issues of 109 seniors. They provided 116 lunches, they had 145 rides to 44 clients. They received a new bus, which they'll be bringing to Town Council at our next meeting, so that the council people can look at. And they also had 74 volunteer hours, so thank you to our senior center, Carolyn Haglund, who's our director there. Thank you to all the people that came to the New Milford Social Services and New Milford Senior Center, Cold Homes Warm Hearts 5K Walk, that was Sunday, that was to benefit our community fuel bank. And for those that would like to donate to our fuel bank, and this is funds that we give to those less fortunate that need, whether it be oil or gas, to heat their home for the winter, they can either contact Social Services, the Senior Center, or the mayor's office, and you can make the check out to the community fuel bank. I'd like to also thank Paula Marana and the Commission on the Arts, the volunteers for this year's Painting of the Bulls, for the Empty Bull fundraiser that will benefit loaves and fishes. My daughter, Tia, and myself had a great time there as well, and it's a wonderful endeavor that they do each and every year, and it gets bigger and bigger, so thank you to that. Friday was Water Witch's annual dinner, awards dinner, so first, I'd like to thank all of our first responders for everything they do for our community. Without their help, we'd be in a very, very tough place, in a very costly place, so I want to thank them for everything they do. I'd like to thank outgoing Chief Jim Furlough for Water Witch, he was the first chief to ever serve as chief twice, so thank you, Chief Furlough. I'd also like to congratulate the new chief, Rich Squires, and his new command staff, and thank you for all they do. And finally, a thank you to our servicemen and women around the world for protecting New Milford and our nation, and also thank you to our veterans who sacrificed for our town and our country. And remember, when you get a chance, thank a veteran for what they do. Thank you.
Before we begin the consent agenda, there's a need to make a clerical change, apparently there was some differences between the agenda that was filed and the appointments that we had, this is our last meeting, we need, the end dates had to be changed to January 31st, 2020, and there were some that read January 1st, 2022, that need to be changed to January 31st, 2020. These were not recorded anywhere in the minutes, and the dates on the minutes were not changed to the corrected dates, apparently a prior incident. Anyway, they are corrected now and will be recorded as such. So before I make the motion on that, there was also, there is an error in the agenda that we have in front of us tonight, and when I make the motion for item 4B, if you look at that in the tax collector, it says that the refunds were in the amount of $56,623.91, that is an error, too bad, but it really should read $5,623.01. So I'd like to ask that we make those clerical adjustments, and then I'll move to approve the consent agenda for items 4A and B and 5A.
So we have the first motion, can we have a second for amending the minutes?
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And then I've moved to accept the consent agenda with those changes to 4A and B and 5A.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Good. And here's a copy of the corrected minutes for the secretary.
And just for the council's edification, the list for the new boards and commissions will be at our next meeting, because they actually take effect February 1st.
Okay. Item number six, Native Meadows moved to accept Native Meadows for the special town meeting. The town meeting voted unanimously to accept a donation of real property known as Native Meadows from the Northwest Conservation District, with the permanent use restriction to preserve the property and limit its use to passive recreation only.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item seven, under the mayor, move to authorize this municipal master agreement for design projects with the state of Connecticut.
Second.
And basically what this is, this happens every 10 years, state of Connecticut has one for design and one for actual road construction, and this is what's needed to apply for state grants and to give them, the state to give us the grants, we have to be fully compliant with the municipal master agreement. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item eight, from the Chamber of Commerce, they would like us to accept some road closure requests, I'll move the following, this is for this year, 2020, for the fireworks celebration that'll be held July 3rd, that Friday, 2020, they'd like to close the crossover, the Southern crossover of the Green Church Street-Bank Street, from 2:00 PM until the fireworks, approximately 10:00 PM. Bank Street, 2:00 PM until 10:00. Ford Hill Road, Pigler Hill, and Townview Drive, for the duration of the fireworks, same times, and this all hinges also on a rain date of Friday, July 24th.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
8B is, also I move to accept for Village Fair Days, that we close the Church Street to Bank Street Southern crossover, this would be Wednesday morning, July 22nd, through Sunday, July 26th, for the setup, et cetera. They have 5:45 PM on Friday, for the 7:00 PM for the annual kids' run, the rain date for that would be the 25th, and the section of Church Street from Main Street to the parking lot in Town Hall would also be closed for the duration of the fair.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Chris?
And I'm assuming this is going to go through all the other approvals, police, and that we haven't seen yet, but that's coming.
Yes, I don't think we have anyone here from the chamber to represent this, oh.
Denise is right.
Would you answer that question?
Sure. Yes, all of the forms have been sent to the appropriate people for approvals, I'm just waiting to hear back.
Okay. And the final item, 8C, on the tree lighting ceremony.
We need to vote on this stuff?
Oh, sorry.
Just a quick question, is this the insurance for that?
It's for all of them, I think.
Yep. Yep, shows their insurance.
Insurance is dated, ending June 30th.
They would automatically.
So you ask for an updated policy.
Okay.
Once June 30th comes out.
Good point, though.
Yep.
So I'm sorry, we didn't, so we have a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And the last one is the tree lighting ceremony, they want to close the Southern crossover on Saturday, November the 28th, 2:00 PM to 8:30 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Great, moving right along, item nine, Parks and Recreation moved to accept a donation of $350 that Parks and Rec was offered, from the New Milford Rotary Foundation, to be used for the Kids Catch and Release Fishing Derby. They are requesting the donation be put, I don't know that, yeah, they are, they are requesting that the donation be put in the revenue account, 104-50500-4471, for further appropriation into account, 104-50500-53408, which is Parks and Recreation Program's specific account, Walter.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
We have a little quiz on these numbers. Item number 10, New Milford Police Department moved to accept a donation of $4,000 from the Iron Law Motorcycle Club of New Milford, Connecticut. It'll be used for the Police Explorers Program. This donation, they asked to have that put in the revenue account of 104-20100-48400.
Second.
And we will also be sending a letter of thanks to the Iron Law, and the chief is very excited about beginning this Police Explorers Program for our youth here in New Milford. Danbury has run a very successful one, with some New Milford kids there. So I'd like to thank the chief and Iron Law. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Excellent. Item number 11, Riverfront Revitalization Committee, proposed ordinance, and I believe that Leva Furman is going to talk about that. She is asking that we take action on establishment of the Riverfront revitalization as a permanent committee.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Leva Furman, I have been chairperson of the Temporary New Milford Riverfront Revitalization Committee since 2017, I believe. We, our terms are expiring, I think it's January 20th of this month, and rather than do another temporary committee to be followed by another temporary committee, the mayor and I discussed this and felt to come forward with a ordinance for a permanent committee. I was here about six months ago with a similar ordinance, and at that point, it was deferred, so we've come back, we've revised it to meet some of the concerns that were raised at that point in time, and would ask that the council consider sending this on to town meeting, as is the process to establish a permanent committee at the time. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Any other questions? Chris?
So I'm looking at F, what was it, F, promote, facilitate, marketing, and other programs that focus on the Riverfront, there are visitors and wearers of the Riverfront. That is under the purview of this committee, and I guess I have a concern about marketing in general. And if it's too hashed up on every committee of volunteers who may, and we don't know what the makeup of the committee is going to be in five years, 10 years from now, we don't know what the makeup of this board is going to be. To me, marketing needs to be under the purview of a town employee who has some expertise in that, so they can market the whole town, and this can be part of marketing the whole town.
Well, I mean, the intent here is that we would work with, you know, the town on their marketing, hopefully by then, we'll have a marketing campaign.
But it doesn't stick out here, right? This document will be here, if we approve it, it's going to be here forever, so I want it, I want it to be specific.
Well, for example, when it comes to marketing, something like a River Fest, I mean, the committee would market that.
Yeah, see, I think that needs to go through a town employee, has to be responsible for.
I mean, at this point in time, I don't know, mayor, you can answer that better than me, if there's someone designated or delegated to do that.
Mayor, we have a, in our Economic Development Office area, we have marketing through there, don't we? I mean, who markets the town?
So Randy, would we put in as a caveat, work with the Economic Development Director?
You could, but in my view, it's kind of applied. Especially, I'm sorry to interrupt too, is if you read further with.
The last paragraph.
Yeah, it's pretty clear, and if you're that specific with it, you're going to confine yourselves to not working with other groups, organizations, and other government agencies. I'm very comfortable with the way it's written, as it is.
About if we added in, there's no Economic Development Office or Corporation for Economic Development mentioned here, so would you feel more comfortable if that is mentioned, as in facilitate, promote and facilitate marketing and other programs along with, that focus on the Riverfront to increase, you know?
In conjunction with?
In conjunction with, rather than guide us up.
I feel comfortable with that, too.
Would that?
That would make me more comfortable.
Yeah, me as well.
How about in conjunction with when necessary?
Now it's, yeah, now it's, it's very, too subjective for me.
So we'll put the Economic Development Office.
So it'd be in conjunction with.
Appropriate government agencies, I'd feel comfortable with, because if we lose one of these.
Everybody okay with that? Appropriate government agencies?
Sure.
Not confined.
The Riverfront, of course, is in our downtown, is what makes New Milford New Milford, is you guys have a set, you know, set of members, I know some committees there, and I don't know if, it has to be, I know in that kind of development corporation, we have seats set aside for certain members of the town, and I don't know if that's something that's possible, having Karen's position being a member on the board, or maybe a council member, I don't know if that's something that.
You mean how we have council members that need to sit on certain committees?
Do whatever we want, certain boards.
Right, that, right.
Is that something that could happen?
This has been discussed, whether or not.
Yeah, that's not the.
That would be a bylaw.
I think the committee needs to make determination as to how they're comfortable in government. in governance. And one change I would make, instead of governmental agency, I don't think, my back is up, I can't stand it, but instead of a governmental agency, I'd say municipal agency.
I agree, municipal.
We don't want to keep, you know, our.
We don't want anybody from Washington coming up here.
Right. Good point.
But I think to answer Mike's question, Your Honor, that the way Leva, the way this has been drafted, I think, is really, is really a committee of volunteers that seek the guidance and assistance to facilitate from the professional. And I don't know that they, unless you think they're for necessity, I don't know that they need a town employee.
And in some discussion with some members of the town council, it was felt that it should be perhaps in the employee's job description who they support.
Good point. Excellent.
You know, so then you just can't write an ordinance and keep, you could keep adding to somewhere, but this, if it's in their job description, they know it's their job and.
Right. I agree with that, that it would become something to add to our economic development director, or whatever we call that, that job, so that it's always in, not assumed, but it's in force, that person, keep your eyes on here. So as far as your committee, one question was raised before about the committee shall exist of seven members, three alternates, the amount of time, so the four initial regular members would, and one alternate would serve for four years, and then three would rotate in, so that everyone ultimately will end up serving four-year terms.
But they would stay under them, and so that all get appointed at the same time?
Yes, interesting. So, but the four years is what was brought up. I just wanted to know how other council members feel about that.
Councilwoman Frances, may I just add to this? I do not feel comfortable with four years. I just don't. I think this is an appropriate two-year appointment, just like many of our boards and commissions. This body is a two-year body, the mayor's office is a two-year body, I think it should stay within the two-year terms.
I guess I'd like to understand what the thought was behind four.
But I was on charter revision, as some of you know, and there, our boards and commissions are four-year terms. I'm not familiar with two-year term commissions, Tom, so.
Well, I, listen, whether, whether you're, we're familiar with it or not, I just think for something as large as this, of talking about redeveloping the Riverfront, this is not a small committee, this is not something that's got a small task, this is an enormous task. And if we have people on here that, two years in, or three years in, we don't feel comfortable with the direction it's going, I think you have, I think, just like we have, people at the town, people may not be comfortable with the mayor's seat or the town council's seat, you have every two years to pick and choose those new folks. I, this is a big committee. This is a big committee. I mean, you're not talking about just plant your boxes on Main Street. You know, you're talking about changing the complexion of this town. And quite frankly, I would feel more comfortable with, now, that doesn't mean that the people who are on there can't be reappointed every two years. I mean, that's, there's no restriction on how, there's not a term limit on here, in my opinion, but I think every two years is a prudent, is a prudent term.
Mike?
For something so large.
I think the largest, as was pointed out earlier in public speaking, the largest board in this town is, I mean, largest chunk of money in this town is from the Board of Ed, and they do four years, and they, and they stagger them. And I think that actually has a positive outlook in that it doesn't change with the political direction of the town, so that you have people staying. And the Board of Ed is a good example of it, is, is it changes slowly, a lot, a lot more slowly than the council changes, so it still keeps some of the continuity. And having it staggered, you know, if you don't like the direction, half the people are going to come off, and half the people are going to stay on. I, I don't, I don't agree with you that it should be two years, just because it'll, you know, if we don't like the direction it's going. I think that, I, I almost like the stagger, so there's some more continuity into it, instead of all new ones based on a new administration.
One thing that I would say, as was brought up, I think we're looking at it from one side. The other side is, the mayor and the council change every two years. And I think we all agree, gridlock happens regardless of the size of your town, or your state, or your country, if you have people at cross purposes, and I, for one, would not like to see that happen on any committee, but especially this, if you have it moving along. But I will say, Mike, just, this means that everyone would be serving four-year terms. So your point is well taken, that the four years, these two would come back off, maybe, or not, depending. I think the two years, just to say this out loud, gives a chance to review, if the administration changes, a chance to review who those people are, rather than ending up with cross purposes. I know it has happened occasionally. And this is a 10-member?
No. Seven.
Seven and three alternates.
Correct.
But you're, you're putting the alternates in for the same timeframe as your regular members. So in effect, you have 10 people that are involved, right?
That are four years, and four years.
And you have no one as a member, ad hoc, well, ad hocks one thing, but you're not, you don't see that you would be including a member of the council?
The mayor and I would be meeting when, you know.
I'm not talking about that, you're not, but just the question.
Not, not in the ordinance, but I think when we discuss.
Okay. As we have a council member on Housing Partnership and other committees, this will not have that.
It's not written to have it at this point.
Okay.
I mean, the one thing I would say, I'm sorry.
Lawson?
I'll defer.
Okay, thank you. It was that, this committee is, reports to the town council directly, reports any programs, any initiatives that it wants to undertake, comes to the town council if there's any funding needed, or any grants to be applied for. So no matter what the term is, the town, this committee still is under the town council's direction, and has to come for approvals of what we do.
Point taken, thank you, Mike. I was going to bring up the Board of Ed, we do have the four-year terms, and when there's a vacancy, it's a two-year term to fill out until the next election, and I'm very comfortable with that. And you use the word continuity, and that's huge in a, in a project like this, and I'm very, very satisfied, more than satisfied, with the checks and balances along the way, which is, quite frankly, us, you know, and that's how that works. I think that's very important. Tom, you bring up a good point, about two years on this board and the mayor's office. And you know what? We should really look at that in the revision of the charter. I really think the mayor's office should be four years, to offer some sort of continuity in that office.
Whoa, and then the weeds here, did.
He opened it up, he opened it up by saying a four-year term for the mayor.
I, I didn't agree with that when it was brought up, under charter revision, and I won't agree with it in the future either. I think that's a very poor, I, I don't think that's a good idea, just like I don't think the four-year term right now is a good idea. I think the people who are on this are doing a wonderful job of trying to help us revitalize the downtown Riverfront. Some of this started in 2008, when I sat with some other members here on the Planet Conservation and Development Update Committee. The Planet Metrics Group brought in a fantastic rendering of what looked like a redevelopment right where DPW was. It expanded the downtown towards the river. That's where this started. I sat there, I remember, because I was on it, it was one of my main pushes, because I pushed that conversation about moving DPW out of there, you know, we've got one of the most beautiful water fronts in the country, yet we have, we have salt and sand trucks and our, and our heavy equipment parked there, right next to the river. So to me, I, I'm very passionate about this. I want to see Riverfront redevelopment, and I don't think the folks on here are going to do anything that's going to jeopardize the town, but I like the fact that every two years, if, if somebody steps up and says, you know what, this person's been doing a great job, and we have somebody coming in here with some fresher ideas, or a different experience, or a different skill set, that we can now, you know, bring to the table, I think it leaves the door open.
But we allow that, though. If it's, if it's staggered, there is, there's going to be spaces every two years, isn't there?
Walter?
Not that I see.
No, it's not, it's four years, but now we're going to end at the same time.
They're not going to all sign on, like the Board of Ed, it will, it's staggered, staggered.
Two sides of the coin here. I like Mike's side here, I like Tom's side there. Time is always the acid test, and we're talking about a, a term limit here, or a term length. I'd be willing to go with two years, see how it works. It's the acid test. Time is always the acid test. So it makes sense to me. Both sides make sense to me, but I would like to start with.
Chris?
With two years.
Walter, I, I can see both sides of it, but for me, it comes down to, this committee is, I don't know if reports to is the right phrase, but as Leva said, reports to this council. And this council is two years. And if the people decide to change this council at some point, the next council, or another council, should have the opportunity to, to change.
But they'll get to change half the members. Pardon me? They'll always get to change half the members, or almost half the members, you know, three sevens or four sevens, every time, so they'll get to make, I don't want to argue this point any longer, I'll go with whoever the majority is, I just, I don't think it's that big of a.
So, okay. So is there a motion to amend?
I'd like to make the motion to amend in the, in a paragraph, whatever, for the initial regular members, and one alternate member shall serve for four, for four year, for two years, I'm sorry, and three, I don't know.
So they have alternate members to serve two years, three regular members, and two alternate members shall serve two years, thereafter, regular and alternate members shall serve, serve two-year terms.
I'm sorry.
Well, I think it should be all members, all seven members are appointed at the same time.
And if that passes, then we'll worry bigger about the three-year one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I made your second paragraph.
Well, I've made an amendment to the motion, so that's, there's a.
Right.
Well, if we get a vote on the amendment, then we'll vote on that.
Yes, there is a, a motion.
Okay.
We also have to do another amendment, didn't we talk about?
Me.
Yeah.
So we can take these in chunks, you know what I mean? All right, so this is the first amendment. So could we read, reread the amendment? Stephanie, please.
Okay, so the amendment, I believe, is, let's see.
I move to accept the establishment of the Riverfront Revitalization as a permanent committee, per the proposed ordinance.
Okay, who seconded that?
Well, we had a motion on the floor for the amendment first.
There's no, there's no original motion?
No, I made that motion when I read it.
Who seconded it?
I'm sorry.
Okay, so now you're seconding the original.
Before we, before we do that, though.
Well, Tom's amended, right?
Right. If the council was to.
Withdraw.
Go with Katie's initial motion, then there would be no ability to change the ordinance, correct?
So I will withdraw my motion.
And rephrase it.
Okay.
And withdraw the second, right?
So can we, can, can the council make adjustments to the ordinance, proposed ordinance first, and then at the end, approve the adjusted ordinance?
What I would do is, I would say, I would move to adopt the ordinance with the following revisions, the following amendments.
We got to vote the amendments first.
And then you vote the amendments.
Right.
Okay.
If the amendments pass, then you, you move the motion as amended.
Okay. So I withdrew my first motion, and the second was withdrawn, right, Stephanie? You got them?
Yes.
Okay.
You did it.
So now I'm going to move that we accept the proposed ordinance for the Riverfront Revitalization as a permanent committee, per the amendment, per the proposed ordinance with amendments. And we're going to mention those amendments now? That's the way you want?
Second.
Hold on, wait, wait.
What was the following amendment?
With the following, right.
You described the amendments.
We got one, sorry. With the following amendment?
Well, we actually have two, I think.
Okay, amendments.
We're going to add some language to F.
Oh, you are going to, okay, go ahead. All right.
So, so the first amendment is?
So the first amendment is that four of the initial, initial seven regular members, and one of the three alternate members shall serve for two years, and three regular members, and two alternate members shall serve for two years. Thereafter, regular and alternate members shall serve two-year terms. So that's the way it's written, substituting two for four.
Somebody has to start off with a one-year term, to be altered.
Just reading what it said.
Is the intent, excuse me for interrupting, is the intent of the council that these are staggered on-year terms, two and one-year terms, or that the whole committee is two years, and then moves back every two years?
Didn't say.
What I would state, I mean, just respectfully, I'd state that, that four of the initial regular members, and one alternate member shall serve one-year initial terms. And thereafter, and three regular members, and two alternate members shall serve for two years. Thereafter, at the expiration of each of those terms, the members shall be, serve two-year terms.
So you want to start them with the one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you need to do that to get the stagger, to be staggered.
We did that with the economic development ordinance about 10 years ago.
All right, so four of the regular members and one alternate member shall serve one, one-year term.
Initially.
Initially.
Right. The initial regular member.
Got it.
Right.
So then, three of the regular members, and two of the alternate members shall serve for.
Two years.
Two years.
Exactly.
Thereafter, regular and alternate members shall serve two-year terms.
Then you get the automatic stagger.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Just forgot the name. Okay, Stephanie?
Do I have a second for this motion?
Second.
Any discussion on this amendment motion?
The amendment to the motion.
Amendment to the motion.
We have a first.
We have a first, and then we're going to do the next one.
Right.
Second.
There's two amendments to this motion.
Two amendments.
I'll restate that I totally agree with the four-year terms. I find it gives you continuity. I find that they are staggered, you are changing every two years, which is what I'm hearing everybody saying. We have the checks and balances built in with this body and the mayor's office.
Okay.
And I'm just perplexed why we can't stick with the four years as proposed by the committee itself.
Okay, well, we have a motion.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay.
Next.
And the next one was item F, to add to item F, which reads, promote and facilitate marketing and other programs that focus on the Riverfront to increase visitors and awareness of the Riverfront, we will be adding the following, in conjunction with.
Municipal.
Appropriate municipal agencies.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And now we got approved of.
Okay. Well, I made the motion to approve it, as amended, to approve the amendments.
So we have a motion to approve the ordinance as amended?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So, Ray, if you could give the edification to the council, the next step in the process is going to be a...
You need a town meeting.
Yep.
As a permanent committee.
Correct. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Set the town meeting for, uh, can we do it on the twenty-seventh? Would be our next meeting is January twenty-second, twenty-seventh?
Today would be fourteen days.
Fourteen days.
That's okay?
Twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
We can? Okay.
January twenty-seventh at six forty-five, and the E. Paul Martin Room?
Yep.
We have to make a motion for that?
She just did her second.
Yeah, she did.
Yep.
That was part of your motion, right?
Yep.
Is that for the main motion or its own motion?
I made it as its own motion, but...
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, item twelve, executive session. And we'd like to have the town attorney, John Tower, Rachel Bella, join us, please.
And folks who want...
And Jack Healy. What's your name?
Graham Moe.
I still reveal, so...
Graham Moe.
Oh, Graham. smaller. Got it.
We're back in regular session. No motions were made, no votes were taken.
Walter.
Oh, motion to adjourn!
Any discussion, hold your favor? Thank you.